West Valley. New work session, West Valley School Board, November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, seven A M. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens, after identifying themselves, proceed to make comments as briefly as self-decomits. Basic rules of decorum only think at all times. Chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when appropriate, when appropriate, including when statements are out of order to lengthy breach of personal privacy rights, are abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in public form. We'll stand for the first ten minutes. And let's lead into the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice world. Since there's no, thank you, since there's no public participation. I'm a turn will go right into the main topic. The twenty twenty-four levy and election process, Mark Fessler and Cindy Foley. Presentation and discussion of the next steps going forward. And we each have. Background and considerations in front of us and also on our computers. So let's go.
Good morning. Let's see here. So at our last work session, we thought it would make sense to dedicate a section to the levy, levy processing. The election of levy process for two thousand and twenty-four. So to that end, Cindy, I put together some information to present to the board. And then we should have enough time after this, so we can help them discover the fact about it. The information that I'm going to present today really is aimed at being able to answer two questions, two questions that we need to. The first question is, should, should, should a levy be pursued during two thousand and twenty-four? And then the second question really splits into, into two directions. If yes, what amount should we do? And then after that, we'll talk about if yes, what actions are appropriate for, for new engagement. And other next steps. If no, if we decide we're not going to run a levy, or if the levy doesn't pass, then we need to start thinking about operational plans. That need be developed for the district so that we are more on firm financial credit. First, a little bit of background about the election process. There will be an election in two thousand and twenty-four. If, 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 in elections, and we'll talk about the conditions of when we would have an election. But elections involve both electing trustees into their positions and also having levies considered on the ballot as well. There will be an election if there are more potential interests in these two positions of Laurel's term comes up. At the end of, end in the, in the spring, when you were appointed in May, that was an appointment. And so that is, it will be an election or elected position this spring, and then Mark, same thing with you, both of your terms end in the spring. If there are more than two people who are interested, then we have an election. If we don't, then those two people will be big, big back though, running, running unopposed, and then we'll go into those two slots. The other reason we would have an election is that we would want to put a levy on the ballot. And just a little bit of background, we do have a, we are operating with levy funds in our budget, and it's about three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And those, I'll show you in the next slide, are a result of prior levies that continue to go every year. The highest voted levy that we can consider is seven hundred and thirty-three, just a little over seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And so that comes off of spreadsheets and prediction tools that we have that we use from, from the O P I. So the, the board can consider anything from zero, if you decide not to run a levy, up to the seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. We'll talk about, you know, how we look, how we benchmark against other schools, and then what our current situation is. And, and so other, what, what different values would be to consider and why would that consider? Another thing, just so everyone is clear, the last successful levy, operational levy occurred about seventeen years ago. So the community has not experienced a tax increase that's been supporting the schools in over seventeen years. See what, how that plays out relative to other schools. One thing that I thought we did really good last year, and I think, I think Kalispel Schools came up with this approach. It's just this, it, it's, the, the community can be confused around what levies are and what bonds are, right? So I like the alliteration going on here, levies are for learning and bonds are for building, right? So we have a bond that we're currently paying off relative to the expansion of the school right here. But levies are used for learning purposes and bonds are for bricks and mortar. So those types of assets. All right, with that in mind, I put together a chart that shows the history of bonds and levies went all the way back to nineteen eighty-nine. And, and what happened last year. The green rose represent when bonds or levies were passed, and the white represent times where the levy or bond failed. You take a look at this, there were two, so first I'll take a look at bonds. There's a bond in nineteen eighty-nine and a bond in, oh, my nemesis, through the touch screen. This is, I did not have a touchscreen in the classroom either. So if you go back to, to those bonds that we're looking at right now, are retired, that means they're fully paid off, and there is a bond on the books right now. That's. That, 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 I think it was six, it was at six point eight million dollars, yeah, six point eight million dollars for the body for this, this expansion out there. Obviously for that, you know, keep walking through.
You broke it.
Yeah. There's a reason you just eliminate me with my tech technology like nothing. There we go. That was, that was the draw of the presentation, this last bond, and I'm staying fat, that's great enough. This last bond, this six point eight million dollars is still active. Was that a twenty-year bond or thirty-year bond?
That was, I want to say twenty.
I think it's twenty, I remember looking at that. Yeah, we're not quite halfway through paying off that bond. Yeah, if, so if you look at this, I've shared this with a couple of people in the past, and I think great representation of what, what has passed and what hasn't passed. But this doesn't show visually that we can think about for future communications. It's really the, the drought that has occurred from, from levies, right? So the last levy that passed was two thousand and seventeen. And if you actually put every year where we chose not to run a levy, this charter would go way down to the floor and show you that there's been a real, a growth dry spell. In terms of levy funds being raised to help the school. Any questions on the history here?
So did he, I mean, it looks like it used to be more common to literally run a levy, pass it, and then run it the next year and pass it? That doesn't.
We did it based on need, you'll see two in the oh-three and oh-four year. I mean, when you get down to seventy-four cents on a levy, you're very specific on what your need is. And when we ran the next one in oh-four, it was again very specific to a need. And so, excuse me, you've got some folks that have the thought process that you should be putting a levy out in front of your voters every year. And we, the boards through the years have battered that one around. And so, as you can see, we haven't done that. And we've only gone out when we've had the need and put it out to the voters. Yeah.
All right, a little more background. Around elections, elections, there are costs and effort that it takes schools to run, to run elections. There's the administration of it. So to appeal involved, my time, we hired judges to, to oversee the ballot counting process and validation process. We pay for ballot, printing ballots, we pay for mailing these, and in general, we can count them based on our prior, our last levy, about fifty-five hundred dollars. To their expenses that we would, we would see for that. Timing will be May seventh, and if you look back behind you, there's a, a, a chart that shows everything that we would need to do to execute this levy, and we'll go through that just at the end of this presentation, so we can show you how the timeline, the specific milestones that we need to hit. And then, and the new ball time for running those. All right, switching just a little bit and taking a look, sort of zooming out and looking at where West Valley is relative to other schools in the valley. There might include this, like, in the Blackhead Valley, and what I, what, we're gonna look at about two different slides here that gives a perspective on where West Valley is ranking relative and relative to other schools. The first one is spending for, for pupil. This is literally just taking what your budget is and dividing that by the A and B, or the average number for law. And schools that are, you can see where West Valley is, West Valley will be represented, and then Warrior Blue, and the other schools will be in red. And so if you look at it, it might be a little difficult to see. If you're not, if you're not able to touch the screen. There's, the, the, the schools that I'd like you to keep your eye on here, definitely West Valley, and two other schools that make great comps or benchmarks for us are Summers and Evergreen, because they're K eight schools. With five hundred to six hundred in their A and B, we write down about seven hundred and sixty, was that, was that Alaska? So if I can highlight this for you, Summers is right here, we're showing about eleven thousand four hundred dollars spent per person, and average per child or per student. And Evergreen is at, at ten thousand dollars per student. We are down at eight thousand. The ones that are below us are Creston, Helena, Flat, Swan River, and Deer Park. So you can see those tend to be smaller schools, and sometimes when you have small, very small, very big, very small denominators that can throw you. West Glacier, for example, shows is a very high number over here. Deer Park shows is a very low number, and those are sort of extreme. So some of these you need to kind of look at, say, there's, you know, the, some, some, some silliness going on with the, or it's not as meaningful, well said. If you have a different denominator, Whitefish, though, is way up there, no, no real surprise there. Summers is pretty high, Sea Falls is, is right here, here's Kalispel, so if everyone has sort of a reference point on Kalispel, right there, they're sort of around that. Follow mark, Big Four is here, you can't see what's going on. Other ones that are close to us, at least three, Smith Valley, Kyla, are right there. So, any questions on this?
Are high school students more expensive than elementary school students?
Yes, high school students get higher allowances and they're more expensive.
Would that be reflected maybe in, like, Whitefish? Of course, not really, because Whitefish in front of your balls, in Kalispel, I'll have high school students, I'm just saying.
There, you're right, there are K twelve, there are K eight, and then there are, so you have a range.
Maybe nine to twelve would have a higher, the cost, cost more, higher, higher people expenditure.
That, that's a great point. We could, I could break this out.
Oh, no.
We, we have.
This, this shows us what we need to see.
Yeah, sure, just so everyone knows, the source here, if you want to get into the data online anymore, it's all publicly available information and with by kind of statistical reports, so that's what this tells. All right, next slide I wanted to show is. It overlays really two pieces of data or information. The first one is blue bar, the blue bar shows what our budget has been for our, our general fund budget, our general fund budget, by all of that, two thousand and fifteen up to two thousand and twenty-three. Remember, so two thousand and twenty-three, for the twenty-three school year, which is last year, was five oh four, one, seven, and we're very close to that issue. What happens when, when you overlay the, the, the levy, the operating levy over the top of this? You're taking effectively a flat amount, a set fixed amount of money and dividing it by denominator that's getting bigger and bigger. So as, as we, as we continue to try and operate a bigger school with the same amount of money raised through operate, through the operating levy, you're seeing that percentage of the budget. The G F, the general fund, being made up less and less of, of taxpayers' funds for the school, that next one. So you saw, if you go back to two thousand and fifteen, it's sort of twenty-two percent. I just want you to have these numbers in your head when we get to the next slide, because you'll see what this, what this means then for West Valley. So we're currently at sixteen point eight percent of our general fund is supported by operational levels. Any questions? All right, if you take that sixteen percent, you put it into a graph and compare it to every eighteen school. That sixteen point eight percent then shows us is the third lowest school in terms of percentage of the budget they supported by operational level, that the function of operational level. Again, if you look at, you see, you see all the schools in here, the schools then change, tend to change just a little bit, kind of what you were talking about, Maryland, for different reasons. Big Four, for example, which, you know, some, we get some experience with Big Four, they actually, they, they have a large tax base. They were the last one, last school to get a significant operational levy passed. And there's some other things going down there, but they're actually in pretty solid financial standing right now. Whitefish has a, has forty-five percent of their G F, supported by operational levies. If you look at it, sort of, the, the, the center in here is sort of in that twenty, we'll call it twenty to twenty-eight percent, twenty-nine percent. If you go back to where we were back in two thousand and fifteen. We were at twenty-two percent, you can see, we sort of slid down. Now, I mentioned a couple of minutes ago that the two schools that Cindy recommended, we look at, I think it's a great recommendation, is to look at Summers right here. And then look at Evergreen right there. So those are the K eight schools that have a hundred and sixty for the A and B last year, and then six hundred and forty-four for the A and B last year. Our A and B was seven hundred and sixty-three last year that we used to cover in our budget. Look at the A and B in just a second, let's see what are the trends in our count here, our student count here, and then what that, how that will translate into our projected budget for next year. So when we look at this, we're going to have a recommendation, because the question is, how much, you know, should you go for, what's reasonable? What can, what, what can you, just, if, if you go for seven hundred and, the full seven hundred and seventy-three, it's going to push up in this branch up over here. If you go for nothing, we're probably going to keep sliding down just a little bit more, and we're going to talk about a number to consider, at least today, maybe to start talking about what is sort of midpoint between Summers and Evergreen, something that would give us some meaningful financial support to, to work with. Any questions on this?
That's kind of staggering. It's shocking to me, like, I would have never guessed we were as young as we are.
I didn't either, Laurel. There was some of this Jeff and Steph that saw during contract negotiations last year, and it was, it was eye open to me to, to take all this data from Flathead County, put it out there. This, this is me just taking these sheets and, and putting the numbers in, and then looking, I was like, that, that surprised me a little bit too.
Yeah.
So if we jump to, you know, answering these questions, the first question, if you're probably should levy for people sued. And if you ever want to try your hands at running the books here for a month. The answer would be yes. So, and we'll, we'll take a look at finance, we'll report the regular board meeting, we can talk about them today if you want. But the recommendation, Cindy, I know it's, it's an emphatic yes, on a recommendation side of things. In order to do this, what the board needs to do is pass a resolution during your February twelfth regular board meeting that says that you intend on running, running a general fund levy by ballot, and that the election day will be on May seventh. And there's, there's basically a boilerplate form that, that we can, that we can fill out, a motion approved and approved during that meeting, that we get the whole process started. When we talk about the timing, if you look at this top yellow bar, that, that goes, the, the row that goes to the right, that represents that step. So the first step is, are you going to run a levy or not? If it's not, don't, that's an easy, rest of that crap just gets away. If you say yes, then everything else gets in there. Any questions here? All right, well, then the obvious thing is question two, right? So if you're going to run the levy, how much, how much, what, yes, the, the question, if you answer yes to that, how much should you do? Cindy and I have looked at some numbers, and last year we were talking about a three hundred thousand dollar levy. It's not a bad place to, 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 to start. Why three hundred? And it's, you can look at it from a variety of different angles. Three hundred we're recommending right now, because the district is down a quarter million dollars in its, in its reserves, right? So our ten percent is the maximum you're allowed to fund your reserves versus your budget. And with that budget of just about five million dollars, you should expect to see half a million dollars in your reserve. Right now, we have about a quarter million dollars, half that reserve, so that's, that's where that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number comes from. So we're down, so if we run into any more hip-ups this year, we're going to end up having to start talking about budget amendments again. Last year, if you remember, the board passed a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget amendment, and that's what took, we were near target, I think we're about, well, we'll talk about that in a second, we were near target, and that took us down to the level where we're at right now. The other thing that's going to happen next year is the parents' choice, house bills three twenty, is it two or two oh three? They got the numbers. It's the parents' choice, where.
Three twenty.
It's a true, I think, three twenty. This, this, this will affect us. Next year will be the first year we're not going to be able to charge out of district tuition for students here, and right now, that's eleven hundred dollars per child. And right now, we're recognizing more than forty-five, forty-five thousand dollars in, in our general fund, and then extra money above and beyond that miscellaneous fund that we can use to pay operating expenses here. So you can see we're down about, we're going to be down right off the bat, about, you know, if we're trying to refund the reserves and look at that lost out of district income, that's three hundred thousand dollars. If we try and fully restore the reserves in one year, so.
And you won't get any revenue next year for all those out of district kids, with the exception of A and B. And so you won't get any upfront revenue, and when you will see some revenue is going to be in the following year. We'll, we'll be moving in to take care of all the paperwork, just like we've always done it for out of district kids and tracking them. But the revenue will come a year in arrears, and when it comes in, it's not coming in as your over base. It's coming in to fund your base as a tax. Tax relief on that base budget. And so that's another school finance one-on-one, but it might be something that we get into later on to kind of visit about that. But right now, that money, we've been able to increase our budget with that forty-five thousand. And we've done that consistently, it, it was prior to my starting here in two thousand and three, we were billing for tuition. So we've had that option, and now that's going to go away.
And, and not to be a wet blanket here, but it's going to, there's more downside for us, actually, yeah. When you, when you start swapping students, the school district that has the lower of the two operating costs, that's what you end up reimbursing the kids with. So there's more downside for us.
Weren't almost all of them less than what we charged for tuition in terms of the reimbursement amounts?
It's, it's mixed, we've got, we got.
It's mixed, the majority of your kiddos that are out of district are going to be below the sixth grade level, and so you'll get about just over a thousand dollars for those kids. For those kids that are in the middle school, we've never charged a different higher rate for them, even though we've been allowed to do that. But that rate comes in at roughly fourteen hundred. But you don't have enough out of district in that middle school to offset your loss with the little ones.
Yes, so with that new law, will out of district students still need to be approved before they come here? Good question, yeah, the short answer is yes. And that's, that's, that's a, there's a big discussion that needs to happen around what are the criteria that we're going to use to accept or reject students to the school. There are legitimate arguments and, and ones that are going to be a little harder to back up. Any other questions? So that, that was the yes side of things, and then we can talk about the no. If, if we get into this, if, so if we go down the road of trying to raise another three hundred thousand dollars, if you look at that, the three hundred thousand dollar, add that to the existing operational levies that's in place, divide that by the projected budget for next year, I'll go into that later on, that puts you in the twenty-three percent range. And just to, just to refresh everybody, that twenty-three puts you right, would put us right here, assuming no one else gets, any, any, there, with your switches and change. That moves you between these two, it's not asking for the high end, it's actually asking just slightly below, so the three hundred is not an unreasonable number to consider. If you're looking at pure operational costs, we'll talk about correct on here in just a second, if there's anything else that can happen. If no, well, then, or you, you decide not to run it, or if the levy doesn't pass, we'll really need to come up with operational plans that are going to save at least three hundred thousand dollars next year. And you can start, remember, we're between ninety and ninety-three percent fixed costs here, and that's really all salaries, that's sort of. So that's, you know, we're going to have to go, go. Any questions here?
Do you think, as far as like getting specific, if we look at what Cindy said, the ones that have passed have been very specific? We're going to have to do this exercise just to, you know, strategize on it, if this levy doesn't pass, you know, how are we going to, you know, adjust the operational expenses at the school? I think that's an opportunity for us to really identify specific, effectively specific costs that we're going to utilize this levy for. Because if it doesn't pass, the status quo is, you know, not going to be maintained here, and there's going to have to be changes. And to the, the extent that some of those are maybe compelling for, you know, the parents of students or the community, I think those would be good. You know, good to line out so that we can have kind of specific talking points as we sell this to the community about what exactly we're using it for. Because I, I do feel like when you round off the first, it, it becomes a little bit like, it's just a little bit, I think it makes it a harder sell, like, that it's not as thoughtful for a specific need and utilization, here it is, it's on paper.
There's more detail.
Let's, let's talk about each one of these, you know, and.
And class size is one of those, I think, my part was certain, yes, exactly, I mean, you have physical constraints, we might not be able to put state max in a classroom. People decide that, that's, it's a fire, that's kind of, that's one way to go. Other ones could be that the West Valley experience isn't about max class sizes, right? So that's, that's, that's a depending on the community, and what that's worth.
Yeah, just, yeah.
The question that goes out to the voters has to include how you're going to spend the money. And so with that, you know, you're going to spend it on, you know, new curriculum, potentially. You're going to spend it on utilities. You know, it's staff, supplies, minor equipment, those types of things. But yes, drilling that down, and you're going to have to say how you're going to do it. And, excuse me, salaries and benefits, part of that levy is going to, going to be used for salaries and benefits. And so one thing moving forward on that might be a zero percent increase on the base. I know that that's not something that people want to hear, but that might be something that we have to do moving forward. My recommendation to you, and Jeff, you had talked about this last spring, I know, in some meetings of, is to have a finance, finance committee. And so that committee, I would say you would, you would definitely have your admin team, your soup, your two principals, your business official, one or two trustees on there. And then probably somebody from the W B T A to sit down and you just go through it all and see where it's at, and then come up with what you feel would be a good number for that levy. And then if it doesn't pass, you've got it all sitting there that you know that this, these are the cuts we're going to be making, and you've got your plan in place.
So when you say zero percent on the base, I'm assuming it's for that calendar or like that calendar year?
That year.
Okay, okay.
They, people would still see their steps and lanes, their experience year increase, but no increase on the base, which is, I mean, with the money you're going to be getting, and if you, if you can't pass a levy, it's just, it's just not there.
And if you think, think about a percent on the base, our, our payroll is about three, three, three point three million dollars. So every percent is about thirty-three thousand dollars. So, you know, if you're, if you're talking about, hey, we'd like to fund two percent, you're looking for sixty-six out of your budget. If you go to zero, you could sort of save, you, 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 you know, you haven't really.
Saved.
Yeah, you have, you're, you're breathing salaries, but you're not really saving anything on your spend rate, when you talk about spend rate, you're going to win that too.
I'm just thinking like with, when we've. I'm just thinking like with, when we, cause that's a good point, a good idea. I don't think I gotta again line it out and spend the time. I just, I think, cause that ballot, the ballot doesn't seem like when you read what's on the ballot, I don't think that's gonna sell the levy.
You're gonna have to.
So it's more that marketing side of it. And I think if we can line out compelling use that at least, maybe you can get them to agree on six out of eight uses. I think then they'll, they'll say yes. But I think, you know, if we just kind of
I think we have.
These generic uses, I think, I think they kind of, the assumption is that we can say no to this and then the status quo is still there, they'll be fine. You know, nothing will change. And I, I think we just wanna try to emphasize this isn't the this isn't the wish list levy here. This is the, this is kind of the, the bare bones necessity type of a levy for this year.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. And if we can ultimately work it backwards, like you say, like, hey, this is our plan. Like if we don't pass it, this is what's going to have to go. Like, that's gonna be way more compelling. And maybe it doesn't say that specifically on the ballot, but if we can at least get that out in the marketing piece, but I think we work it backwards and do a committee.
Yeah.
Like you said, I think it's a great idea.
Realistically, it's pretty simple. What's gonna go and it's people. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, programs that we offer. And, you know, it's already tough to offer programs in the middle school or in the elementary when we are operating on no levies from oh seven, you have such an increase in student population. Granted, we get A and B for that. But it's, it's really, so if you're talking about thirty three thousand each percent, sixty six thousand, that would have to be an additional to this three hundred thousand that we're supposedly gonna have to fix in one year, which might not be realistic, to be honest.
Yeah. And then you're gonna have steps and lanes on top of it.
And I think our steps and lanes didn't cost seventy thousand.
It was more like twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah, because not everyone's involved in that, right? So, yeah, so that they did surprise us as hard as we
So I mean, that's.
That's part of what's eaten our, made our spend rate.
That's right. Cause we thought we were gonna save about that much and.
Yeah, they thought we, we thought we'd have that.
With steps and lays that completely took that over.
But I think we can, like, as far as personnel, it's just like rephrasing that personnel to specifically what it is. And I mean, one of the big things that I've seen since kind of we started is the, just the the, the cuts and cuts and cuts on parent support, which is completely counterintuitive to what you think you would want to do post COVID and school closure and this, this academic, just, you know, jackhammer that went across these kids. I mean, it's the exact opposite. I mean, everybody's done a great job holding and maintaining, but I think just emphasizing those types of things that, you know, this is gonna get worse, this is gonna get harder.
Yeah, you'll have no extra specials.
Yeah.
At all. So.
And, and kind of showing those, outlining those, just rather than the generalized expense.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think community members truly don't know, like, I don't even know, like, my kid comes home and he has some small groups and I'm kind of oblivious to what's going on until I see, no, we don't have enough staff in the lunchroom. These special groups are having to be canceled anytime. We can't fill subpositions. I mean, just that ripple effect. And you can't easily quantify that right now on student data. But I mean, we're facing some serious shortages here that are impacting kids. And that's gonna get way, way, way worse if we have to cut three hundred thousand dollars. I mean, I don't even wanna know what that lunchroom's gonna look like.
I think projecting class.
I'd like to throw another mention the words concerning the, concerning the heating and cooling system. To me, that's a major, major, major concern. And it's, and it's one of those things that that the community sees that and and you can take the picture and equate it, whatever, and okay, now how do we, how do we work that into the whole equation?
Well, that can be part, that would be part of what you're gonna spend the levy funds on.
So that can be included.
So you can include that. You may need to increase that from three hundred thousand though. To take care of that.
We don't have to do another, an, an extra building levy then or a, you know, we can include that in this general.
You could include that in that.
So we don't have to.
Yeah, I wouldn't run a second. I wouldn't run a second levy. I think that if you put out two, it's gonna be an either or type of situation. But the other thing you can do is when you're planning for the building reserve budget for next year, you could potentially offset some of that cost with that building reserve.
But, okay, but we can, we could add that to the list of needs we have, now this levy to pass.
So as you're, as we're thinking about, and great discussions, as we're thinking about timing and reverse engineering or, or start, you know, starting at the ends and the two potential options. If you look back on that graph, there'd be a chart, the second large horizontal row, if that represents the time, that's actually the, uh, that, that's when you have to there how much you're, you're gonna do. And if you go up, the little blue boxes on there show when your board meetings and work sessions are, which means by April fifth, well, this is in the last slide, the summary, while we've been, by April fifth, the trustees have to state a resolution.
So we gotta do that on the twenty first.
Of March, yeah, March eleventh.
Or March eleven.
Yeah, the twenty first is your work session, unless we, we can always call special. Board meetings, but the regularly scheduled one would be on March.
My recommendation would be to do it at your regular meeting.
Yeah, we should.
You could even say in, in January, you're gonna run a levy. You don't have to get the number figured out until like that March meeting. But you can know, we're running this thing. And then if for who knows what happens, like the last one we were gonna do in twenty twenty and then COVID hit, you're able to cancel those prior to moving forward. And we canceled both the levies we were looking at running. But you, if you're, if you're set and you've discussed this and information at your board meetings, you can get to January and say, we're gonna run this. We're gonna determine a number, we're gonna have community meetings, that type of thing and get, get the word out.
I mean, I think that's, that's all feasible. I mean, we can get the number by March.
So we should, we should actually. Speaking of numbers, alright. So just to give everybody an idea of what the budget could look like and most likely will look like next year, whether it's fiscal year or school year twenty five, or school year twenty four. The years are always determined by the year that you end your school year. We're looking at a budget, what, what, what we can do, Cindy and I can do any business, right? You, you guys can do it too. You go on the OPI and there's a, there's a there are a series of spreadsheets that you can use to estimate your budgets. Just need a little bit of training to be able to do it. Um, when you take our A and B and plug it in, you keep month five point one four seven million dollars is our budget. So that you, well, our budget's actually gonna go up by about a hundred thousand dollars next year. It is. Um, that's the, what's gonna, that, that's due to the three percent that the, uh, that, that the state is increasing the allowances for A and B. So there is a hundred thousand dollars that come that way. Again, if you take that three hundred thousand dollars, divide that by the five point one, I'm sorry, divide the three, assume you're gonna get it. Divide by, so if you take five point one million, add three hundred thousand to your denominator, it becomes a five, five point four. Divide three hundred by five point four, and that's how you get the twenty three percent that I showed you before. Okay, so you can, we can look at that here and there. The other thing that we need to do, so we need to take what the impact is on, on houses, um, tax rates. And so that's part of the communication with the community. And when you do this, these same spreadsheets show you that you have eighteen dollars, maybe one cents per hundred thousand dollar evaluated value on, on houses. We'll look at a couple of examples here to show you what that might look like to individual community.
Well, and that piece is tricky too, because so often people see that and they think, oh, my market and not my taxable market value. Which are two entirely different numbers.
Exactly. Any questions here? I just a couple of things on A and Bs for, for everyone to look at. In order to get to that five point one million dollar right there, Cindy, I, any, any different factor that needs to make some assumptions around like your A and B is one. And what, there are two different options you can do to calculate your A and B. Schools always take the higher of the twos because that gives you the most funding. And so it's either an average, it involves an average of prior A and Bs for your last counts. And if you look at what's happening with that A and B, this shows us from K through six and seventh, eighth, again, seventh and eighth gets higher allowances per child than K through six, based on the types of programs that they're, they're supposed to be offered, experiences they're supposed to have. But this shows you where we are and what we are projecting for next fall, which means we're really gonna look for what, we will not use the actual, we'll most likely use an average because it has higher numbers in it, which will give us higher allowances. So we try to get as much as we possibly can.
I can point something out too real quick for this. Have you noticed in kindergarten from the fall of twenty twenty three and then just go back several years, you can see how hard it is to predict that number. It's impossible. You go seventy, eighty, eighty-two, sixty-four, sixty-three, a couple of years in a row, and you're back to the mid seventies, then you get to the mid eighties for a couple of years. That's one or two teachers right there, even with, you know, kids that are that age. So staffing becomes impossible. And when you're looking at cuts and stuff, pretty much impossible to.
And just, just so, so what happens is that box becomes this box, this, right? As you go through.
Yes, right.
This box is seventy-five, like to Richard's point, all I did was take eighty divided, like eighty plus seventy divided by two, that's how.
And you can look at a last ten year average or a last five year average, and they're pretty, they're pretty different. You know, so it's, it's, and then that class becomes really hard to staff as it goes through the years. Because then you have shifts within the elementary itself. So you could go from, you know, three sections to four to five, back down to four, back. And so it's just this constant movement of people, which is something that's pretty tough.
Last year, sixty-one, now it's up eighty-seven.
Yes.
And you follow that, you can take that sixty-one back through. If you want, if you like graphical representation, says, I think this one's a little easier to pick out. The trend that that shows that our, our A and B has plateaued right now. Um, but who knows what's gonna happen. If you, you overdo the movie, do our best estimates and, and get a best standard budget.
When we, when we start to connect A and B, I was just thinking with the operation levy with the other districts. Could you just comment size, you know, kind of the operational levy buys, you know, A and B or student count? You know, I think it would emphasize just for us, we passed this in our last one, oh seven. You know, I'm just guessing, maybe it was like, hey, this was allocating kind of like a thousand dollars per student or, or something along that lines. And now it's that was probably eroded to a couple hundred dollars per student, whereas maybe it's other schools are spending. You know, or have operational levies that are contributing. You know, several thousand per student.
Yeah, the prior levies, if we looked at it, certainly a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, that was the one year time. And so the A and B, let's say it was half, half of what it is now.
Yeah, it was like three oh seven or something, I think, in oh seven, when that levy passed. And now we're up to seven forty-eight.
Right.
That's a huge difference.
Yeah. I think that's another way.
That's a good stat.
We can look at different ways of communicating what, what this is. Alright, so let's take a look and say, so, uh, sort of make those numbers real or impact on houses. Let's pick a random person from the board. I don't know, let's go with Jeff Meredith, for example, right? So this is his house. And what he would end up paying would be an additional two hundred and three dollars per year in, in, in school levies. For three hundred thousand dollars here in school.
Alright, we gotta change the number.
This is another house. Um, it's actually owned by a teacher who had school, um, probably, you know, this represents more probably the mid, the mid range of, of, of homes or houses here in the area. And so if you look at one that has a market valuation of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you're looking at just under a hundred, a hundred dollars a year. That's increased just due to schools. For that three hundred thousand. Things to look at. If anyone wants to play around, there's a, uh, there's an estimator that we have. Then we're for every address, interestingly. Um, you can't pull up the market file in this, in this one for every address. You can get a lot of them. And we had trouble, we wanted to do Councilon Creamerys too, but it didn't work, it not set up.
It's a corporation.
There's been a lot of stuff going on with the legislation this year and I don't even understand all of it, but Yeah, so are people gonna see an increase in their property taxes due to that?
I, I, yes. So what, what's gonna happen is we're gonna get a bill, let's do tomorrow or whatever it is. And then in the spring, they're gonna send a correction to that. So then you're gonna have to pay more. It's not, so if the people, so if if the counties wouldn't have petitioned this, then that wouldn't have happened. So it would have been, so people are gonna pay the same as they always would have, but since this challenge went in, now there's going to be a correction to that.
Is that a one time correction?
I, I think so, but what that's gonna do for districts is now they're gonna see that come in at the same exact time that we're gonna ask for a levy. What we have to make sure people understand though, is that this would, you would have paid this anyway if the county commissioners would not have done their lawsuits.
And you can see that right up there. Like if you look at elementary district levied mills, twenty-three is more than twenty-four. But when people look at their tax bills, they're not gonna get in the minutia of that and understand that correlation.
Right.
And so all they're gonna see is that schools are getting more money.
That, that's correct.
I think it's gonna be a pretty minimal bill, I would think. I mean, yeah.
Right, but it's just the optics of it, isn't it? You know, it's the timing, it's the optics, it's the unfortunate nature of the narrative that we're facing anyway. Some of that stuff, so.
And then I also think there's like a feeling that people in West Valley area have like a higher tax rate for schools than, you know, say someone in Creston or something. Is that true or is that?
A higher tax rate for schools?
Or like they pay more for taxes.
Each district builds their budgets off of our taxable value. And our taxable value this year at twenty-one million, that, as our taxable value goes up and your mills are gonna go down because of that value and the cost of a mill. And what West Valley has in their favor are, is all that commercial over there in the, around Costco and Lowe's. We didn't have any commercial tax base really, except, um, you know, if we had a dairy or we had, um, you know, another type of business. But we just didn't have that. And so now that we've got it, that helps us. And each district is going to build their budget upon their need. And now what people in West Valley and any other community here pay for, they pay money towards the high school. The, you know, Flathead High School system, part of that goes there. And then, um, so that's another thing. But if we were to look at what our uh, taxable value is versus somebody else in another district, I think that's something that we could do. And then Mark can share with you guys at a meeting. I think that's a really good point.
Yeah.
For us to look at. But, you know, you look at the Callis Bell, or you look out at Big Fork and Big Fork, you're gonna see a taxable value that is huge. Uh, Summers, what they're working with for taxable value is huge over what we have.
Yeah, and so I think if people can see that.
Yeah.
And say, hey, we're actually not as bad as.
Yeah. And then we can show them what, you know, what everybody's gonna pay in regards to the high school. F V C C, none of us are gonna get away from that, but then it is very specific as far as what they're paying to West Valley.
On their. Well, you're, you're probably, it's, it's, it's one of those perceptions. So somebody, somebody who's said that, they felt that in twenty thirteen, probably when we passed this addition. And, and then you're kind of, you pass those big bonds and then you spike up. And then growth happens around you and then it, you know, it wanes over time. So now we're probably on the, you know, kind of the lower, I would assume is the lower half relative to other districts or even more so given the lack of operational lives. And I think that's a really good point to show. To say, it's not the same as it was ten years ago. And, you know, it's time to kind of catch ourselves up a little bit.
Alright, two more slides. This, this slide right here summarizes these key deadlines and milestones. That represents, so you can see the four, four bullet points here, there are four yellow or is it two, two, four, oh, there's a good one, is thirty-four up in the section that relates just to the levy. The last bottom one is, is our, us, this summer, what we need to do for our budget work. The four bullets on this slide represent those four horizontal rows in the, in the, in the top half of that blank chart. And so really, these are the things that we work to, and then we can plan activities around those things. By February twenty seventh, during your regularly scheduled board meeting at the latest, you need to decide whether you're gonna run a levy. Um, and like Cindy said, if you know what we're gonna do, we can do that in January, there's no reason to wait. The second one we covered is how much does that levy need to be? That's April fifth, that's that second line that's over there. And if we, if we can, we can do that during March, regularly scheduled board meeting in February, typically we'll get that together. But that's just to anchor this thing. We are not gonna miss any dates. So this, this, this chart is gonna be hanging in Richard's office. One in my office.
Mine's bigger though.
He's the soup, right? This is bigger than mine, and so we're gonna have a, 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 a piece of string, a little washer on it, and we're gonna move that every single week, and make sure between the two of us. That we do not miss a day, just so we know.
Thank you.
You get the phone call from one of us saying, we're, if you, or this, this, we will, we will find you, make sure we don't miss the date, I'll say it like that.
Yes.
Alright, uh, the next one is election day, May seventh, right? And then uh, the deadline, uh, the last one here um, is uh. That's in those top four things, is we just need to help, help hold an organizational, this relates to the election, the trustee piece, so who gets elected out of this?
After.
This one is less about the budget, but it's about circling back to the, remember the election is a combination of trustee positions as well as the um, the levy. And then this last one just means whoever is in those positions, we will need, we'll say who's gonna be the chair, the vice chair, and who your business manager is gonna be next year. Yeah, I know, you're still a child, but you decide whether you're like.
Let's watch our wording here, Pastor Larry.
We'll see. Um, let's see, next steps, I decide whether you wanna run a levy, turn them out, and then the last thing, the big thing is to engage the community, that's what I had for you guys.
In talking with Mark a little bit in regards to your community engagement. You know, I think one of your first steps could be to go out to parents and survey. Parents of students and staff that are in the building. And you could get a survey out, and then that could give you kind of an initial. Um, feeling of support. For the levy. Um, it won't cost you anything. If you do some community nights. And invite the community in and do some presentations, that isn't gonna cost you any money. We also have, uh, as part of our Title One. Uh, budget, we have um, a commitment to bring the community in, and so that could maybe dovetail with some of that. Um, the other thing, um, maybe have some tours of the school. I know when we were looking at the bond, um, we had what was known then as the cattle shoot. And so we had the newspaper and the um, local news station here. Filming the kids coming in from recess and hitting that cattle shoot and how piled together they were. Um, and so that, that turned into something that was a positive. So you could bring in, um. Uh, you could also invite the newspaper out and that, those are, these are all things that won't cost you. But you could invite the newspaper out to, to visit with Richard, to visit with Mark and to. Talk about this levy and what it would do for the district. And then um, and have it be a real meaningful conversation. And let them know that last year what was asked for. Um. It's still there. It's still there, it hasn't gone away.
Cindy, when you talk about a survey of the um, parents and the staff. I guess I have, what kind of questions would we be willing to answer from them? They're, I mean, they're all in the same. Position, uh, that they know we need money, so what? I'm just wondering what, what purpose we hope to serve with the survey.
Well, in look, in looking at what we did the last time we were gonna run. A levy, one of the questions was, would you support? Would you support a levy? And I, I can't remember, I think we had four questions on there, so it wasn't anything that was gonna take a lot of time.
Oh, okay.
And they were very specific, very succinct, and then they would just go through and yes or no. And um, so I think that would give you kind of a temperature. Um, of your parents and your staff members that live in West Valley.
So then, before we put any information out. I mean, before we really. Let everybody know what a desperate situation we're in, we would ask them. Whether they would support a levy.
Well, you're gonna do it as part of your conversation, so my assumption is, is that you've got an informational item on your monthly agenda. And you're discussing some of this. And so you're gonna start getting this out in newsletters to the community of what the board's talking about. And then we're gonna be sending out. You know, we're gonna be sending out a survey, so maybe that, maybe you're deep in the discussions, you're, you're scheduling some community nights, and then maybe you toss that. Uh, survey out there, you could do that, you could do that in January if you wanted to. Um, when you make motion to pass that you're gonna run a levy. Then you could, you could do it then.
Did we ever get access to any of those surveys that were ran last year? To parents?
I wonder if the questions could be a little more specific too, if we knew something like, would you support a levy if it meant keeping the class size of us today?
Mm-hmm.
Or whatever it is, or.
Yep.
That it would allow us to keep staff and not leaving them off. Yeah, because if you just ask people, they're gonna support a levy, they're like, well, no, it's just maybe taxes.
That, that's what, that's what I'm thinking, you know, that.
Yeah.
Their first, their first answer is gonna be, no, why, why do I tax myself?
But if you give them some context, would you support a levy if this?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Yep. And, and like I say, you can do things that don't cost extra money to the district. You don't have to send out the fancy colorful flyer. You know, you can have some personal meetings, have them come in.
Well, now we've got a P T O that's active. That might be, I mean, that might be helpful.
Yeah.
Talk about community night. Cause they've already had that move ash was was. Huge success.
Yep.
We got a good little resource there.
Yeah, I think if we could do like a big house presentation, keep the guys. That's gonna be a lot more than setting out a bar.
Although I will say a flyer in the mail does allow you to hit a different demographic that's not gonna come to the school. And so that's where I think we're gonna really have to build. Quite the sandwich in how we're hitting people.
Doing the survey with just specific questions, but they're gonna think, oh.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna show up for this meeting, no, I don't want to have your class sizes.
Mm-hmm.
The surveys that we've started, give them thinking about the problem, right?
Yeah, you can slant your questions, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you can slant your question. Just like if we're going through like foundations of assessment, you can slant your questions so that it gives away an answer. To your students, but you can also slant questions so that they're educational and prep the reader. To answer, um. So you could, you could basically, I'm not even saying this right, you basically write your questions so that it's both educational and um, questioning in nature.
It should be after. The financial committee needs to determine exactly what's gonna.
I think the sooner the better on that.
Yeah, so that financial committee is gonna have to need to be able to determine what exactly is gonna be cut. Before we write those questions, which are, you know, the educational questions, which. Um, so the sooner that you go, the better.
Right.
So perhaps, I don't, I mean, I don't know why we can't decide to do this at every summer meeting. Why do we have to wait January?
I think you can figure out finance committee and some of that, your December meeting.
I think we could start the whole ball rolling in December.
You'll have an action for your finance committee as far as who on the board is gonna be appointed to that committee. And then roll from there and then. You know, Richard and Mark can, can work with and get other people from the W B T A. Whatnot, a representative and see where that goes, yeah, you bet.
Yeah, I just don't see us. Start the ball rolling in December.
Musical accompaniment, awesome. Um, so what I'm doing right now is I'm in our draft agenda for the board meetings, so establish a finance. A review and a preview of establishing a finance committee with fiscal uh, year two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah, and I think we do want with that, essentially, you would open that up to the community. Finance committee, so I think, given a little time to put it out in some newsletters and.
I guess.
Yeah, you can take action on it in December. I think too, the sooner we can start communicating, being through social media, through the newsletter, even just blips like. Truly, some of these grabs just round, I was getting in the face, like, I would never guess. With what's returning out here and how I perceive this school, like, what this is actually doing, yeah. Yeah, I think the sooner the better, we can get it out there and start the party. Did you think about the answer to Cindy's question regarding?
This, you should close your work session.
Okay.
Prior to.
Okay, got it.
I guess we keep a lot of picture of that.
So you motioned, you're.
Sure, let's do it.
I'll make a motion over there. Second. Having a soundtrack is probably distracting.